What's up everybody, my name is Candace Smith and this is Pasco Connect Magazine. I am so excited to bring a series of interviews to the Pasco County community. This year, voting is in, there's a lot of seats up and a lot of candidates that are vying for certain positions in the community. It's important that we're well informed on the candidates as well as the position and what it's going to do and how it affects the community. So, I'm so excited, yet a little nervous to be doing my very first candidate interview, but I'm excited about it. So, I want to go ahead and just go ahead and get started. I want to introduce my co-host for today, his name is Marlo Jones and he's the president of Pasco Young Revolutionaries. What's up, Marlo, how are you today?
I am doing, I am doing well, thank you everybody for tuning in, I am on location like the Lincoln Lawyer, I'm doing well today.
Okay, that's what's up. Alright, so our first candidate that we're interviewing today is none other than Victor Rodriguez. He's going out for Pasco County Commissioner. What's up Victor, tell everybody, what's up?
What's up, how's everybody doing, Pasco County?
Alright, alright, so that's what's up, let's go ahead and jump right into this. So, you're going out for County Commissioner and I don't think that I have put this question in there, but maybe, Marlo, if you're able to help us out between you and Victor, letting us know what exactly the County Commissioner's seat does. Marlo, do you want to give us an overview of the County Commissioner's seat? You on mute, boo, you on mute.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can hear you.
Alright, um, yes, County Commissioner, it is a very important position in the county. Right now, there is one female on the County Commissioner, I believe all the rest are males. And there are no minorities that I know are on the County Commissioner, right, County Commissioners Board right now. I'd like to ask, turn it over to, yeah, there's never been any minorities on that board, which is, you know, that's just the way it is in Pasco County, but that's what we're fighting to change. But I would like to actually have Victor explain to us what a County Commissioner is and what do they do, so for the public that don't know.
So, yeah, so the County Commissioners are responsible to actually oversee the budget of the county. So, you've got all your, all your, um, all your groups that are in there, you have your utilities, you've got your firefighters, your police officers. All those budgets that are inside county government, the County Commissioner oversees. Outside of overseeing those budgets, they also deal with our day-to-day issues that we deal with, you know what I mean? They, they are responsible for raising and lowering taxes, uh, they, you know, they, they are responsible for our needs that we need in our communities. And, and that's, that's really the, the role of being a County Commissioner, serving the people and making sure that they're doing what they're supposed to do.
Okay, so that's good information to know for sure. I don't even know if I knew before this year, you know, what the County Commissioner does. And so, just to be able to know that they have such an important role makes this conversation even more necessary. So, right, my first question is, what motivated you to want to become County Commissioner in Pasco County District 5?
Well, uh, to start off with, um, you know, I've been a Pasco County resident since 1991, um, for roughly about 29 years. Um, I've attended Pasco County schools my entire life. I've seen the lack of support growing up in Pasco County that the VOCC has shown to the older subdivisions in Pasco County, especially right across from Gulf, uh, Gulfview Square Mall. That used to be one of the most premier subdivisions in West Pasco and you drive through there now and it looks like a bomb went off. So, I, I'm also, um, the only candidate that is running in the race that has grown up here, you know what I mean? That, that, that right there alone should tell people a lot of what I know about the community. Um, I've been here, like I said, my whole life and, um, I'm looking forward to, um, to being able to bring and give back to my community what it's lacked for most of the part of a good 25-plus years. And, and I've also, you know, I've studied my opponent, who's the incumbent, who's been there for 16 years of, um, with ineffective leadership. Uh, I've studied him for the past 10 years and, and I do know of all the, uh, the things and the wrongdoings that he's about. And I've been, the people of Pasco County need to know that. They need to know, you know, that the person that is there to serve the community as the County Commissioner is actually benefiting from being in that position. And that is not what I'm running for. I'm running to serve the people of Pasco County and it's not to any beneficial gain for me. It's to bring the community up and make sure that we have a better place for our kids, grandparents and everybody else to endure.
Okay, alright, so, do you have a follow-up question, Marlo?
Yes, I do have a follow-up question, um, thank you for stepping up to the plate and, um, running. I wish to see more, uh, young folks doing the same thing. Um, because that is one of the ways that we can try to change the fabric of this county. Because this county is so used to the old way of things, the good old boy network, and we need change. We have to end the systemic racism. Uh, but you mentioned something about your opponent and the talk of him benefiting, uh, for the last 16 years. Could you give our audience maybe a little detail and exactly what you mean by that? And who is your opponent?
Yeah, um, so, uh, there's two opponents, um, as you know, uh, one is, um, Brandon Yead running on the Democratic side and then Jack Mariano was running on the Republican side. I'm actually in-between, um, I'm a no-party affiliated, uh, I've been affiliated with both parties, to be honest with you, throughout my voting career. And it's been split and now I'm, I'm, I'm in the middle and I'm saying, you know what? I want to be the one to bridge the gap that, you know, people see, hey, man, you know, you don't have to be leaning one side or the other. I can sit here and I can have a conversation with a Democrat and I can sit here and have a conversation with a Republican and I think that's strong. I think that's something that our community is, is lacking right now and starving for. But, um, I won't get too much into the detail with, with about my opponent, but I, I do know there's, um, there's some dealings. He, he owned a property that he purchased, um, in, in 2017, uh, 2018, I believe it was, um, off of, uh, right off of, um, Sea Ranch Boulevard, uh, you know where, um, the, the Hudson Beach is and you look out towards the, uh, the south, you see two big buildings, he's purchased a land where the third building was supposed to be built on the original plan. It is called Sunset 84 and he's actually the owner of that. That property is, is, um, is a million-dollar property, somehow he picked it up, uh, for, for less than that. There is now a light that is actually going at the end of Sea Ranch on 19. It's costing us taxes, it's about $970,000 that it's costing for that light to go in there. I agree, the light does need to be there, there's been many accidents over the years, uh, the, the residents do want it. The issue that I have is, is, it's, hasn't changed, nothing has changed. So, why now besides him owning that property, which would be a direct benefit of adding another building with 50 to 70 residents or so down the way? So, that, that to me, I just, you can't have that, it's a conflict of interest, you know?
That's what I was going to say, it sounds like Mr. Mariano has, uh, some major conflicts of interest there. Now, I did read several articles, uh, that came out when that, um, interesting deal went down, where he obtained that property. Now, what is the salary of a Pasco County County Commissioner?
Well, currently, um, currently the, the salary is right around $87,000, uh, a year to be a Pasco County Commissioner. So, what drives the, the salary of the County Commissioner is actually the population of Pasco County. So, as you know, uh, as the years go on, Pasco County continues to grow, so the salary will continue to grow. So, um, that's, you know what I mean, that, that is, that is a, uh, it's a hefty salary. But I could tell you this much, that salary, um, compared to most salaries that are inside of the county government and, and knowing that the, the responsibility and the, the voting and all that that carries the weight on a Commissioner, they actually are getting paid less than some of these other people, even though they're getting paid well. But there's some other hefty salaries that are inside county government that'll kind of make you wonder, why are we paying people that much money? So, hopefully, hopefully I can get in there and we can, we can, you know, see if we can bring some fresh blood and, and try to, um, try to divvy up that money some other way and, and, and bring it and put it to other places where it's, it's really needed.
Yes, I turn it back over to you in the studio, Candace.
Okay, thank you. So, what are the major issues that you are concerned with, specifically in District 5 in Pasco County? And, um, how do you feel you can improve those issues if elected?
Okay, um, so Candace, I, yes, I'm running for District 5, but I want to make it clear that I'm not only serving the people of District 5. I am serving everybody in Pasco County. I'm serving the people out of La Coochee, I'm serving the people out of Deafert Hills, I'm serving the people in Dade City, Wesley Chapel, Landville Lakes, uh, you name it. All, I'm serving everybody. So, I, the title of, you know, just District 5 kind of, you know, I kind of try to steer away because I'm serving for everybody in Pasco County. But some of the main critical things that are happening here in District 5, um, is the civil infrastructure. It is, it is crumbling, it is crumbling underneath us. The lack of maintenance, um, and, and upkeep on the system is causing widespread flooding. And, and, and it's, and it's sad to see because when you go through some of these older subdivisions, the county and, and my opponents fix to it is a Band-Aid. They, they're going through, they're tearing up asphalt on these roads, they're putting in, um, you know, pipes into the ground and they're pumping water from one retention pond all the way up to another retention pond. And they're, and they're, they're renting pumps, um, they're, they're, they're requiring, you know, swift mud to rent pumps from United Rental. The numbers are staggering when you see what we are spending on having these pumps out by these, uh, retention ponds, you know, on a, on a yearly basis, you know? So, instead of actually fixing the problem and, and, and taking an approach to fixing it one time, we have a Band-Aid on it and it's costing us money where we're just, we're just going through the motions, you know? And with my background in construction, um, I could tell you, um, I can get there and I will be there and, and make sure I'm in the trenches to make sure that we fix, you know, our, our, our problem with our flooding, you know, whether it's, you know, in, inner coast or, uh, or right on the coast, you know, because it's, it's widespread through the county, it's widespread.
Yeah, I, I would definitely say that that's a, a big issue for me. I have not been here all of my life, but, you know, living in Florida, understanding how hurricane season is and then moving here, living close to the water and then seeing the flooding is scary. Because my first Thanksgiving here, I ran out when, and it was raining, it was like pouring down. But I ran out to the stores my first Thanksgiving, I had no idea the flooding was what it was. And I have a Kia Sorento SUV and the water came over the hood when I was driving down my street that I live on. And that was very scary because I've been in a situation where my car totally stopped working as it drove through water and around, um, I guess, uh, Fox Hollow, Chapman.
I know where you were talking about.
It's terrible, when it rains, we don't go anywhere, we just stay home. Yeah, because it's like, do you risk your car, like, losing power, losing your engine? Causing major issues if you get caught driving through that water? And the way it rains, you know, it's so sporadic, sometimes it's very heavy, just like today. And it's flooded on my street. So, that, that's an issue that I would love to see, you know, what the plan is for the next County Commissioner and how they're going to handle that, yes, so I'm glad you brought that up.
Yeah, so, and the other thing, um, is, uh, the budget transparency. So, um, our, our current County Commissioners, um, they, there's a lot of, there's, there's a lot of stuff that is hidden from us and that, that we don't know what's really going on. We've got agenda items, um, that are being put online late before, uh, you know, meetings. We've got, we've got stuff that, you know, you can't, that's supposed to be access, uh, accessible to the public and, and you can't get it unless you're, you're using a certain web browser. One that I just recently went and spoke, um, in Dade City at the virtual, um, uh, teleprompter there was about, about that. They, they had it where you couldn't open the stuff if you were using Google Chrome. I mean, it, it is unbelievable, you know, we've got, it's a study on, uh, statistics online, there's 47% of the US population is currently using, uh, Google Chrome as a web browser, you know what I mean? So, it's like, it's like to say that you can't open agenda, it's that rare stuff like that that people are voting on in the commission is, is absurd and that's keeping it from the public, you know? Especially during a pandemic where, you know, everything's virtual, it, it's sad. The other, the other, um, web browser that you could use to get on was, um, it was Firefox, which is like a 3.7% market share hold right now in the US. And then you also had Internet Explorer, which we know as kids used to be the one, but now they only have like 1. something percent of the, uh, the, the market. And the other one that you could access with was Safari. So, you guys know, uh, as well as I do, that Safari is only available to people that own Apple products. Come on now, we've got 45% prior to COVID living at or below property. I could guarantee you that majority of the people in Pasco County do not own Apple products. They probably own, you know, who, you know, Google products or some type of, um, you know, different, different product. And if, if you're saying that, hey, you can only use this to get online, you know, that's 37% of the market share that Safari has. You know, it's, it, it makes you wonder why would an IT department that has the money, why, why are, do we not have the availability to be able to use Google Chrome to access our documents for our constituents? So, um, that, that is a huge thing. Budget transparency is, is a very, very big thing that is on my platform and, and it's because we're being, the, the truth is being hidden from us. You know, graphs, graphs and pie charts are, are wonderful when you look at them. But if you don't have numbers to be able to divide out and, and do that to make your own numbers, they're kind of pointless, you know what I mean? Percentages don't help us, give us some real numbers, let us do the math, you know, we know what we're doing when we, when it comes to math, majority of them.
Well, if they let us do the math, Victor, we'll start following the money and then things won't add up. So, that's why, that's why they're doing all they're doing to, uh, make it hard for the public that wants to know and get access to this information. They want to make it hard, which is absolutely, um, crazy and appalling.
Yes, appalling, sure.
Now, the population of Pasco County is about five, almost at 500,000, last time I checked. With a population that's just going to be exploding, you can see it all around the county when you drive, especially if you're going towards Wesley Chapel. In your opinion, why is it that the west side has been neglected for so long with all these flooding issues and all these issues? Last time I remember, Jack Mariano, your, uh, your opponent or your potential opponent's daughter was elected, uh, to the Tallahassee State House. And I believe that she was promising the public then that her and her father were going to do all they could to help this flooding issue. I have not seen anything done thus far and I've been a Pasco County resident all my life. And these flooding issues have been here before I was born. So, it's getting to the point where a lot of people are thinking, maybe they just don't care.
Yeah, I, I would, Marlo, I would agree with you, um, they really don't care. And, and it's unfortunate, uh, because, you know, they, you know, the, the sprawl that's happening, um, you know, going, going towards the east side of the county, um, with all the new development, you know? I, I'm not against, uh, development, you know, in the line of work that I'm in, you know, I benefit from it because I work in the construction field. But you have to have a comprehensive plan. You have to be able to meet with your development, um, you know, group and you have to be able to meet with your school board and your superintendent to understand the demographics of how many students you have in this area and if we go and we build X amount of homes, what kind of strain is that going to put on our school system, you know? I don't think that's happening and, and, and we're, what we're doing is we're allowing these developers to come in and we're giving them breaks and we're not holding them to be the ones to develop the school, you know what I mean? It's, it's, oh, well, we're going to give you a break and we're only going to ask for you to put, you know, $5 million towards a new school. Meanwhile, the developers and all of the, they're, 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 they're the ones that are actually supporting their campaigns are the ones benefiting from it. And then when it's time to build the new schools, because they built all these homes, it goes back to, well, guess what? The west side of the county that didn't ask for all this is the one that is putting the bill in taxes. So, we, we have to be mindful of when we're developing that we're not only developing in these areas, it's affecting everybody in Pasco County, it's affecting the older population, it's affecting people on social security, it's affecting all the other people that are on fixed income, it's affecting the younger, you know? It, it's, it's multiple things that it affects and they're not working as a team to be able to see that vision. They're just blowing it up and, and we're dealing with what we're dealing with, you know? It's unfortunate, you know, it's, it's very unfortunate, Marlo, it's, it's coming to 52. 52 is the next 54. If you guys haven't been following, uh, 52 is getting ready to explode. When I tell you the next 10 years, 52, you will not recognize it, I promise you.
Oh, yes, we know, uh, these developers donate heavily to the, uh, to the different candidates and, um, all you got to do is follow the money and most of them don't even, they don't live anywhere near Pasco County. But that's, that's how that goes, that's, that's another thing that we're going to have to tackle. Candace, I'll go ahead and throw it back to you, I know you have some questions.
Yeah, you know, with everything that's happened this year with the pandemic and COVID-19, you know, how as County Commissioner can you improve how that has affected people in Pasco County?
Well, you know, I, like I said before, um, that, the study that I, I go back to is the, um, is the, the, the ALICE report that is, uh, put out by the United Way, um, they're actually getting ready to, uh, come out with a new one year or soon. But the last report that they did, um, it said that we were at about 45% with, uh, people either at the threshold, which the threshold is the poverty threshold. So, we had 45% of our population at or below that threshold. So, this is prior to pre-COVID. So, the, the families, you know, um, we have been affected here in Pasco for some time. It's not, it's not, you know, pay the pan, outside of pandemic or local pandemic, we have a, uh, an issue, um, with poverty and unemployment in, inside of our, you know, in our economy right now here in Pasco County. So, with COVID, um, what, what I think is, you know, we need, we need to make sure that we have the programs and assistance in place where we can be able to help the people that are affected by it. You know, it, a, a perfect example is, you know, the, when they came out with the assistant program and it was online, all online-based, you know, people, you get messages and people say, man, it, it went through and it was gone in, in, in five seconds, you know what I mean? When that happens, you know, you have a problem with poverty in your economy regardless of, you know, COVID-19 or not. So, it, it's a real problem, we got to tackle it, we got it, we can't say, hey, everything's peachy and fine because it's not, it is not. Pasco County is struggling and they've been struggling for a long time. And, and with the new, um, I don't know if you guys have been paying attention, but the, the economists have already, you know, projected that we are going to have like a $5.4 billion shortfall on our state budget. So, what that is going to do to Pasco County, uh, we're yet to see. But, you know, ho- hopefully I can get in there and I can be the voice for the people, you know, that have been left behind, you know? Because, you know, people will look and say, wow, you know, the guy lives in nice house and, you know, he, he's doing good. But I came from, you know, a family that was struggling, you know what I mean? I, I was raised on, you know, public assistance, you know, growing up in Pasco County, living with my mom. So, I, I understand the struggle and people that know me that went to school with me know that that is genuine, that is no, that is not made up. I, that's where I come from, I'm from that, you know, I've made it out of that and I'm proud of that and I'm where I'm at now because I worked hard and, and, and I'm dedicated and, and, and that's, that's the type of person I am when, when you're dealing with it, you know? So.
So, my last question, unless, Marlo, you had something?
I just wanted to follow up with that. One thing that really, uh, really made me upset is that, you know, I, with my organization of Pasco Young Revolutionaries, we have people that message us, people that, you know, might be looking for some assistance or looking for a, a referral to where they can find assistance. And I know the last two times the Pasco Cares, uh, portal has been open and I, Victor, I know you know what I'm talking about when I mean that portal. That portal has, was open for maybe two minutes, maybe a minute and only allowed one time 175 applicants, one time 150 applicants and the first time, uh, I believe about 1,500 applicants. We have a huge poverty problem in Pasco County. And, uh, our County Commissioners should be ashamed of themselves that they are not doing more. People are struggling in this county, churches are being overwhelmed, homeless coalition being overwhelmed, food pantries being overwhelmed and the leadership is nowhere to be found. They are living good in their houses, they're not caring about the, you don't even see these people come out to, to help the food pantries and the places like that, that, you know, are looking for volunteers. All you see is they come out every now and then for their photo op, you know, to, 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 uh, do what Mike Pence did, you know, when he carried an empty box. But, you know, we need true change in that, in that County Commission. We need true change because this, that, that's so sad, they can only help 175 people, are you kidding me?
Yeah, yeah, this is very sad, um, I, I agree with you 100%, Marlo. You know, it, it was, it was actually less time, it was gone like that, I mean.
Which is a minute, maybe?
Yeah, it was less than a minute, I mean, there were people, I mean, yeah, you couldn't even get, it, what I think, truthfully, what I think happened is so many people tried to get onto it that it overloaded their server and, and it just, you know what I mean? They, they couldn't take it, you know? And, and that goes back to, you know, maybe, maybe we should have did like an in-person thing, hey, you go in and fill out paperwork? So, that would actually gauge how many people actually need help. Because if you didn't, if you didn't get to qualify and get on, you, you, you aren't even considered. So, we left, we left a lot of people out, we should have brought people somewhere so we can get a true data and maybe go back to the governor and be like, listen, look at how many people are struggling in my county, you know? We need more assistance, we didn't even do that, that is a problem, we, we need to get that fixed. And, and with me being in there, I would be that voice for the people, you know, I, I would fight for people. And, and a lot of people probably won't like it, but at the end of the day, uh, guys, I, I'm, you know, if I'm elected, I'm elected by the people, not by the people that are currently in there. So, what people that are currently in there think of me, if I So what people that are currently in there think of me, if I get in there, I frankly, I don't care. Because I'm there to serve the people that put me in that position to represent them. And we've lost track of that. And that's what we need to get back to.
Yes, I agree. We do have to get back to that. Back to you in the studio, Candace.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jones. I have one last question for you, um, Mr. Rodriguez. So there's been a lot of racial tension in the community and a request for the the defunding of the police. As county commissioner, how would you respond to the people of the community?
Okay, so this, as most people are like, wow, that's a tough question for a guy like Victor. But, you know, um, I'm I'm I'm, and and I'm gonna elaborate and we'll we'll spend some time on this because it it is an important thing that is happening here. Um, so I'm gonna say this, I don't agree with defunding the police, okay? But, um, I don't support police brutality and injustices that are happening, you know, all across the nation and right here in our community. I do not support that. Um, but the reason why I don't believe in defunding the police is because right now we already have a problem with drugs. We have a problem with with mental, you know, mental health. We have a problem with, you know, prostitution. We have a problem, a lot of problems with things here in Pasco County that if we defund, then we're taking money away from those programs that they're actually allocating money to. Now, what I am in favor of is reallocation of funds to go to different things. And 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 maybe, you know, right now, you know, as as most people know, we are a, um, intelligence-led policing, okay? And and most people don't know what that is, but what it is, is that it's a type of policing that we have changed here in Pasco instead of being a community-based policing force, CVP. So which means the officers actually get out of their cruiser, they interact with people in the community, and they get to know their demographics and who is in the community. That's the type of policing that we need. We don't need to be looking at statistics and looking at databases, you know, trying to police people. That is not working. And that's currently what we're doing right now. And we gotta get away from that because you will not see a change in the injustices and stuff that are happening currently in the police if we do not change the type of policing that we're doing. Now, I also say about reallocation of funds, um, most, the most people that know me know I went to school for criminal justice. That's what I went to school for. So this, this is something that's right down my alley, you know? And I know I've studied it and I know about it. So, um, when I say real, reallocation of funds, uh, the DOJ, uh, under the Trump administration currently, actually has been giving unprecedented amount of money to the DOJ. And and to tell you guys, um, last year alone with the awards, there was thirty thousand three hundred and twenty-four awards that were given out to police departments across the nation. And and what that is, is these police departments are actually joining the NIBR, the NRBRS, database program, which is reporting of crimes that are happening by the police department. So currently, what is happening is you have multiple databases across the country for different departments. Currently in Florida, the FDLE is who all of our departments report to. So that's where all our crime data and statistics go to. So the NRB, the M, the NRBRS, the MBRS is a program through the DOJ. If we start to report crime to NIBRs, we now open ourselves up for funding and grants through the DOJ and the BJA funding, which is the Bureau of Justice, uh, Assistance Program. That's where those thirty thousand three hundred and twenty-four, um, awards were given out, uh, last year. This number is gonna shock you guys. The amount of money that was given out here in twenty-four for twenty nineteen, uh, funding was eleven billion dollars, eight hundred and six million, four hundred and eighty-four thousand, two hundred and eighty-three dollars. Guess how much Pasco County got? Zero. Now, we may have gotten some funding based off of the COVID because they do have some COVID funding in there for like test sites and stuff like that. And we may have got money for that. But outside of that, we got a big goose egg. And it's because we don't report to that program. We report to the FDLE. So that's something, when I say reallocation of funds, that's something that I mean is if we as a board of county commissioners say, hey, we need to be able to fund our police department, but we can't use fifty percent of our budget to do that, how can we get more money? This is how we get more money. Utilize what is there and take that money to be able to make changes in our community. Because if you get on there and go on that website, you will see all the stuff that it helps with. Homelessness, uh, you know, opioids, I mean, it, mental health, I mean, you name it. We check off a lot of those boxes in those grant programs that we we should be able to open ourselves up to millions, millions of dollars that can get brought into Pasco County to help this. You know what I mean? This is the start of it. If we can utilize what is there for us, we can make change. We can get out there and we can change to go back to community-based policing versus, you know, sitting in cars and 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 driving around, you know what I mean? And actually getting out and interacting, you know, bringing out those horses and walking down the street. I remember back in the day with Bob White, he used to actually walk horses down the streets of holiday. You would see horses drive, go going down the street with sheriff's officers actually on it. And the kids would come out of the community and, you know, you see a horse, you know what I mean? And it's like, and that is the type of community-based policing that we have to get back to. We don't, it's only gonna get worse.
Yes, I like, can I follow up, Candace?
Of course.
Um, wow, you said a lot. Where do I begin, Victor? Uh, I remember Bob White as well. And, uh, I remember Bob White was not kind to people of color in my day and particularly people in my family. Um, I don't have any good memories of Bob White. I do remember him being on his horse and thinking he was John Wayne and thinking that we still lived in the wild, wild west. Uh, but yes, those were the days before the computer systems and intelligence-led policing. Um, I'm just gonna get back to, uh, touch on the budget, uh, that you talked about for a minute. So as we all know, the county commissioners set the budgets, talk about budgets, allocate funds to the different, um, municipality or governmental features in the community, the police department, fire department, you know, all those things that, you know, we pay for with our taxpayer money. Now, as we know, the Pasco Sheriff's Office have recently asked for an increase in money. And the sheriff did not give a reason for that increase, which he did give a reason the last time he asked for the increase. As we all know by now, the sheriff's office almost takes half of the county's budget and funds.
It is.
Um.
Uh-oh. Uh, I think he's frozen. Maybe I'll give a few seconds, maybe it'll come back. Yeah, um, I'll give a few minutes to see if it, um, I think I hear something, but give him a few minutes to come back. Um, I did have a follow-up question as well, um, while Marlo's were coming back on. You know, um, I did, when I asked the question about defunding the police, I know a lot of people hear that and may think other things, but you basically said what defunding the police is, which is reallocating the fund into other areas in the community. So like you said, the, some of the major issues have been, you know, drug-related, um, mental health-related, um, you mentioned prostitution. So reallocating those funds to focus in those areas, you know, where in situations other people can go out to assist those people, you know, versus the police going out, you know what I'm saying? In in a policing mind frame, when those situations don't always require them, not all the time. And like you said, if those funds was going to those areas besides helicopters, you know, different things that are so defensive and so, I understand the protection, but, you know, just looking at things, seeing the way it's going, having conversations that have not been had in our communities ever. You know, I've never looked at the police department in the way that I've looked at them this year just because of having these conversations and different things coming back, you know, full circle. So what do you say about that? Is there not a way that, you know, it could be less of police officers going off, going out, you know, to take care of these situations and more so funding of social workers and preparing them to go out and handle tough situations?
Yes, Candace, and and that's actually, um, that's actually great that you bring that up because that is what needs to happen. Um, instead of sending thirty officers in a helicopter, you know, we can send, you know, two or three officers in a team with, you know, social workers and 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 mental health people to help deescalate the situation. That, to me, is is more effective than in doing what we currently are doing. Uh, because if you look at it, it's not working. Anytime that we go through a call with somebody that has a mental health, uh, issue and it is on record, that person should not end up dead. Now granted, if that person has a has a has a gun and they're, you know, a police officer, that's a different story, you know? If they have a knife and they're going after people, you know, and and uniform and they're trying to stab them, that's, that is a different situation. But to kill people that are known, mental health people with issues, that is not what we need to be doing. We do need to reevaluate how we are doing it. And like you said, we need to create teams that actually go and they handle these issues alongside police officers in case it does escalate into something more, you know what I mean, violent than being able to talk somebody down out of the situation.
Okay, so I see Marlo's back. Marlo, do you wanna go ahead and finish your question?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, 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 most certainly so. Um, hello, I'm back. It looks like we were frozen there. But Victor, um, um, I, we were talking about defunding the police and things like that. So, um, I will have to respectfully disagree with you. I do believe that some police departments who show that they do not do the right things, that they do not protect the citizens, the police that are doing the wrong things. I believe those departments that are not doing what they are supposed to do as protecting and serving their community. I do believe they should be, those funds should be real, 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 reallocated. We should be in reinvested. So when I say defund, I mean reinvest. So a lot of people, when they hear Black Lives Matter or when they hear, uh, Pasco Young Revolutionaries, or when they hear a lot of people in the country hearing, defund the police, defund the police, we're not necessarily saying we want every cop off the street because we know we still need a society where we have law enforcement officers. But what we don't want is the bad cops. What we don't want is the cop, the good cop, that allow the bad cops to be bad cops. Those departments need to be dismantled and rebirthed because it is the culture of policing that is really at the root of the issue. It's the culture. You know, it's when you do have good cops, there are a lot of good cops out there. But you know what? They have to speak up and they have to speak out when they see what happened to George Floyd. Now, what happened to George Floyd should have never happened. But that has been happening to black people since the beginning of time in this country. Trayvon Martin, Mike Brown, Sandra Bland, Breonna Taylor. Breonna Taylor's murderers are still enjoying their life, still waking up, having the freedom to breathe the fresh air, uh, having the freedom to go outside. You know, they murdered a a a a EMT worker in her sleep. Didn't render her any aid. And this is the type of culture that that we are facing. And I know it's in the Newport-Ritchie Police Department. I know it's in the Pasco Sheriff's Police Department. You know, there are five different police agencies in Pasco County. So there is a systemic racism issue. And I know this person because I am an African-American, I've been black all my life. And I've lived in this county all my life and my family's lived here for a century. I know a lot of people hear me say that and I kid you not, literally, since nineteen hundred and twenty-five, when black people couldn't even walk outside when the sun went down in Pasco County, when there were still dirt roads. I mean, we can look up articles and you can see the history of corruption of Pasco County officials, Pasco County former sheriffs. I mean, it runs rampant. You you spoke about the intelligence-led policing. That's another thing that we've been hearing a lot about. And we know in the black community that we have been targeted by this intelligence-led policing. I'm not gonna get too too much into it. I'll let the reporters do that. But at the end of the day, we do need to have a better, uh, relationship with the people in the community. I don't understand why police officers, when they, when they roll up on the scene, it's just bang, bang, bang. Like with Tamir Rice, you know, they just rolled up, shot a little boy playing with a toy gun in a, um, park. You know, trying to pull up your pants will get you shot. Jogging will get you shot. And that type of stuff that you're seeing happening all over the country, that type of stuff happens right here in Pasco County, too. Maybe not on the scale that we're seeing in the country, but the systemic racism. Like I could tell you right now, and you can go and look at these statistics, African-American male is three times more likely, uh, to be pulled over and arrested in Newport-Ritchie and probably even higher in Pasco County, where three or four times more likely to be convicted of crimes than our white counterparts, where three or four times more likely to, uh, be charged with petty crime, possession of marijuana in stores or things like that. So there's definitely, uh, a target in the judicial system and it seems to be the the policing of this county that is targeting minorities, not just black males, but minorities. And that's, that's a problem. So that money that's being spent at the Pasco County Sheriff's Office, those millions and millions and millions of millions of dollars, we gotta stop. We gotta look at that. We need transparency. We need to have a citizens advisory group, uh, like they have in Tampa and other counties where you have citizens elected by the people that, you know, review what's going on. Look at these budgets and look at all these secret agendas that they got going on. Because I don't know about you, but our our sheriff's department and our local municipality police departments, they do not need Hummer, Hummers. They do not need military-style vehicles. They do not need the type of weapons that you would use if you are in Iraq or Afghanistan or in a third-world country fighting a war. We are not in Normandy. Why do they continue to spend our money to militarize themselves? I mean, it's unreal. And every police department around here is is getting that way. So when you hear a lot of people saying to fund the police, that's what they mean. We're tired of seeing our money wasted on BS. Let's hire more social workers. Let's actually have it every time a call goes out and it's something with mental health or something with behavioral health. Let's have, uh, instead of twenty cops going, let's have three or four social workers going. And maybe some, um, you know, some, uh, crisis management people. Instead of just having guns ablazing, the Pasco County Sheriff's Office killed Jerry Brown in an undercover operation. And we are, we, the public, are just now seeing the video of Mr. Brown's execution almost seven or eight years later. Now, when you read the original statements given by the Pasco County Sheriff's Office and you see that video, there's a lot of questions. This is the type of need transparency. And I don't mean to go off here, but we got to do better. We have to stop seeing minorities, uplift our people. We.
I think it's going out. Oh, Marlo.
I invested into the public housing.
Okay, there we go.
And that's all I had to say.
Okay, you were going out a little bit at the end, but, um, we got.
Oh, man.
To to follow up on what Marlo was saying, and I totally agree with Marlo. Um, we do need an oversight committee. And 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 not only an oversight committee over, you know, the sheriff's department, but we need an oversight committee over all of Pasco County government, you know? And and what people don't understand is that we don't have that right now. So if there is a complaint, you don't have nobody to go to. You're, there's nobody. And and like he said, there's majority of the places in, you know, in this country do have. And, and then like he said, there's majority of the places in, you know, in this country do have oversight committees. It, it's not out of the norm to have people of the public step up, put their name on a paper and say they're willing to sit on a board to make sure that our government isn't corrupt, our local government isn't corrupt. That is, that, that, I, 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 I'm just, it's just mind-boggling that we don't have that and we need that. And us, you know, being minorities and, and not only being minorities, but even the rest of the population should want that. They should ask for that. We should have that, period. There, we're in, we're in twenty twenty, you know, going into twenty twenty-one, we need to have that. And we need to have, we need to have, um, monthly, you know, board, you know, we have our monthly board meeting, but we need to also have, you know, we need to meet with the community, you know? If, if, if I'm elected, I will meet with my constituents on a monthly basis to hear and go over stuff that is happening in the community that I am voting on. I'm not just going to vote on things just because four other people that I'm sitting on a board with say that I need to vote. It's, that's not the way this is going to work with Victor Rodriguez when he's elected into office. I'm going to do what Pasco County constituents ask me to do when I hold meetings to find out what they want, what the voters want.
So, um, Victor, just to, to wrap everything up, you know, how likely is it that if you're elected, um, you would have access to those grants and funding? And then how likely is it? Because I, in all honesty, you know, I've had a chance to sit down with the Pasco County Sheriff's Office and share concerns. And what I was asked to do was basically like contribute my thoughts as an African-American on mental health because I'm an advocate. And contribute my thoughts as an African-American on certain things. I have a son that's autistic. I have all-black son. And, um, my oldest son, who is eighteen, you know, I recently found out this year, he doesn't even want to get behind the wheel of a car. And the reason is, is because he feels that's the way a lot of black men die by the police. They get arrested, they get pulled over. He doesn't want any part of that. And what he's sacrificing just to live, it breaks my heart. Because being able to drive as a teenager is such a big thing. And I can't believe that he wants to give that up. But when I look at how he may be interpreting what's going on in this world as a black man, I can't help but look at everything and wonder, is there a way that when there are certain situations that's happening where, say for instance, a black person is being pulled over by the police, is there not a team that can be dispatched that can, you know? I know you're talking about an oversight, but a lot of times things are happening in the action of the moment that needs to be looked at. And there's a lot of times you'll see just individual citizens that'll pull their camera out or that, you know, will stand there and watch. You know, I even saw where, um, I can't think of her name right now, but the lady that always says reclaim my time, I reclaim my time. She even.
Maxine Waters.
Thank you. She even pulled over when she saw some young guys, you know, being pulled over by the police. She just pulled her car over to watch. And to me, that's another thing that the advisory committee could kind of like be, you know, as well. Just because this is happening too much and it's affecting our children too much. If this was affecting white children, the way that they're missing out on enjoying their life, things would be done. And the fact that my children have to grow up in this county and I'm the daughter of a man that risked his life to fight for this country in the Vietnam War and his grandson cannot, you know, enjoy the fruits of that labor and the labor of all of my family that has lived in Florida and, you know, just been everyday citizens and contributors to this world in great ways. And now the, the seeds and the legacy of us, we can't enjoy it. And so I'm asking, how realistic is it that if you are elected, those things are going to change so that my son don't have to grow up missing out on the best part of being in, things of being an American for the color of his skin?
And Candace, you know, I, I feel you. And you know, I feel, you know, your, 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 your pain when you say that, you know what I mean? Because I can hear it. Um, and, and what I'll tell you is, me having, you know, been to school for criminal justice, um, whether, you know, whether the sheriff would want to work with me or not, um, I would make it a point to be at that sheriff's office, sitting down with him, letting him know that a man of color, of minority, has been elected and I am here to help you bridge the gap between that and the sheriff's department. So let's get to work, you know what I mean? Let's roll our sleeves up and let's do this, you know what I mean? Let's, let's get it to where we gain back the trust of the people of color and minorities in the community here in Pasco County. You know, we got the program of the explorers, which are the younger kids that can go in and see that. Let's start there. Let's make sure that we're pulling an X amount of minorities and getting them into that program. You know, there's so much that can be done, Candace, that you, from a commissioner's standpoint, you have to be willing to get in there and work with the sheriff and not worry about an endorsement. If this is not about, oh, if the sheriff's going to endorse me, I can guarantee you, Candace, I'm not going to be endorsed by the sheriff. I promise you, he probably will endorse my, my, my opponent, you know, as he has in the past. But my opponent has shown, you know, stuff, you know, online that shows racial injustice that is embodied in him. So if, if the sheriff is going to align himself with somebody like that, then the sheriff has an uphill battle, you know what I mean? To bridge the gap. But if I'm elected, Candace, I could promise you that I'm going to bring the same, the same tenacity as I'm having this, um, this interview with you guys to the sheriff's office to make things work. I know a lot of people that work in the sheriff's office. They won't come out and they won't endorse me and say, hey, Victor's wrong, we know Victor because they're afraid of retaliation. And I get that and we have to change that. We have to change that. People that work in the sheriff's department know who I am, went to school with me, respect me. And people are afraid to speak out because the sheriff will retaliate to them. That just shows you the battle that we're dealing with right now, Candace. And, and, and I just hope and pray that, you know, people actually do see me for who I am and what I can bring to this commissioning board because I'm ready to fight. I'm ready to fight for all people. It's not just the minorities. It's not that I'm ready to fight for people of all walks of life, everybody. I'm here to do a job for everybody.
Okay, okay. Well, you know what? I feel like this is, like I said, the very first of many conversations, especially before the elections, but definitely out after the elections as well. You know, I want to really have a good relationship with the county commissioner, with Pasco Connect, with Pasco Young Revolutionaries because, you know, we, we've had an opportunity to speak to a lot of people in the community and hear what they have to say. And, you know, they're not happy. They're not happy about a lot of different things and a lot of ways that, you know, things have been ran and they want their voice heard. But not only that, because we've sat across from the sheriff, we've, we've been speaking for a hundred years trying to let people in positions of power know that we're human.
That's right.
You know, and our lives matter. So that, that's nothing new. And, you know, I'm not going to lie, I'm not all that excited about hearing about sitting at a table with them because I did that. I would like to just know that my son, if I leave this earth and his sons that's going to follow will get the rights that every American citizen has and get the privileges that every American citizen has. As we've lived this life, we've been born in this country. Our parents, our grandparents, our great-grandparents have slaved in this country. And then to get here and still have to sit to across the table from the person that's supposed to protect and serve and tell them, "Stop killing us", it's disheartening. So I'm looking forward to a lot more conversations and seeing exactly what the elected person is going to do. One thing I know for sure is that we need a new person in the county commissioner's seat. And so I really enjoyed the conversation today. I really enjoy, you know, everything that you've had to say. You got, I'm going to, I've been taking notes here and I'm going to write an article because, um, I got a lot of good information. I had never had a chance to really talk to you. I watched your interview on, um, The Chamber. I think, yeah, so.
The Chamber and then Pasco, uh, the, the Pasco Talks or, or Talk, Us Talk or something like that. It's, uh, another one that I did.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
This is the third one here. And hopefully, like I said, we got to do this so we can get out there and people know, you know, know who I am and what I'm about, you know? Because at the end of the day, like you said, um, we need change. And, and as you can see, that is one of, that's, that's on my banner, a new voice for change because we need it. We need a new voice in there. Sixteen years of ineffective leadership is far too long. Another four more years, we will be on the hook for a hundred and twenty thousand dollar, um, retirement that will be on the taxpayers of Pasco County. So, um, I don't know if, if you could find a job that will give you, uh, let you get nothing done, uh, positive for the community, uh, for twenty years besides the, a beach where the water is, uh, is not swinnable, um, and, and you can get a retirement after twenty years at a hundred and twenty thousand a year? Um, man, uh, let me know so we can go get a job, right? Because, because that's what's happening here. That's the honest truth.
Yeah, I, I believe it and I.
Sounds, sounds.
Go ahead.
Sounds to me like the whole boatload of corruption, um, from, uh, Mr. Mariano, sixteen years. Um, and if he gets another year, he'll, the taxpayers will be fitting his retirement bill. Is that what you just said, Victor?
Yes, yes, yeah, that is correct. That is correct.
Well, we definitely.
Okay, so that's why.
Go ahead.
That's why it's imperative we vote.
Yes, that is right. And, and we, and we got to understand too that, you know, I know a lot of people, you know, Marlo, you've probably seen it online, Candace, and more, you, you, we get closer to the election, um, you know, people are taking shots at me, uh, because I ran no party. But at the end of the day, guys, I'm here to represent everybody. And, and, and I don't want people, you know, there's going to be people that vote party line, I get that. And, and, and I understand that. But what, what people need to understand is they need to understand who the candidate is and what he is about and how long they've been in this county. You know, like I said, he's been here for sixteen years. He's not from here. The other opponent that's on the Democratic side, she's not from here. She didn't grow up here. She didn't go to school here, you know? She, she has kids here and she works here, but she doesn't know what I know. I know the backstory of Pasco County. Uh, my family does, my wife's family does. We got a big family here, um, and we've got a lot of support with families that have been here for a long time. And we're going to show up and we're going to show out and people are going to see, wow, this is a movement. We're, we're going to break down some barriers here in Pasco County that have never been done before.
So Victor, let everyone know where they can find out more information from you if they have additional follow-up questions. How can they reach you?
Okay, so, um, I've got my, my campaign website is, uh, voteforvic.org. Uh, people can go there, see my platform. Um, it tells you about me, how long I've been in the county. Uh, they can also donate there. Um, you know, I, I, I'm a self-funded guy. I'm a grassroots guy, you know what I mean? I'm not owned by nobody. I can say that. I can look at the camera and say, I'm not owned by no party and I'm not owned by anybody. The people that have donated to me are people that know me and that I went to school with. Some are out of state, you know, but they, they believe in me, they, they, they know what I'm about. Uh, so they can go donate there. Um, they can find me on Facebook. I do a lot on Facebook. And, and, you know, on my page, you know, uh, voteforvic.org, uh, that, it's on, it's on there, voteforvic. Um, and, you know, we got a bunch of hashtags going, uh, voteforvicPasco and voteforvic. Um, and then a new word, hashtag new voice for change. Uh, so we're, we're out there, you know what I mean? We, with the pandemic going on, uh, it, it, it's different. You know, I, I've never ran a campaign in my life, uh, besides when I was, uh, became, uh, uh, class president in my freshman year at Gulf High School. Outside of the hat, uh, I've never ran a campaign. And, and, you know, and I, and I'm doing it with the help of, you know, my wife, um, my sister-in-law, my brother, you know, and, and friends, and, and, and that's, that's the true grassroots, you know what I mean? It, it doesn't get no realer than what we're doing. And, you know, it's going to be an uphill battle, but like we seen on that, uh, that District Four seat, doesn't matter about all the endorsements that you have. It doesn't matter about the hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars that is given to you and a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars that is spent on a campaign, you don't win. You know what I mean? A, a, a woman won that District Four seat that was pretty much self-funded with nine thousand dollars with most contribution, you know what I mean? A little bit here and there, but she was mostly funded by herself. And she took down the juggernaut, the establishment guy. I mean, that, if that doesn't excite people and get people out to vote, I don't know what will. I mean, but to me, I, I, that night, I just said, man, this is why I got in the race is because of this. And, and to see that, that happen just gives me more hope. Um, and, and I pray to God that, you know, God just keeps continuing to guide me and my family and, and, and keeps me, you know, on the path to making a difference for Pasco County.
Okay, well, I appreciate your time for today. Like I said, this is the first of many. Um, I am going to put out an article in the next couple of days. So I just want to tell you thank you for your time, you know? Um, thank you for answering all of these questions. Marlo, do you have any closing remarks you want to say?
Thank you very much for, uh, doing what you're doing and stepping up to the plate and running. And God bless you, man. We're going to be watching everything go down and this is going to be good. I mean, we need more people of color running in these races and that's what I'm all about. So I'm watching.
I appreciate it, Marlo. Um, I, like I said, guys, I'm, I'm here. And, um, you know, like I said, we're, I'm, I'm up against, you know what I mean? A, 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 a juggernaut, you know what I mean? And, but I think a lot of people are, are paying attention. Um, people are reading, uh, people are really following the money. And, you know, like I said, if, you know, all the money in the world cannot win an election. We've just seen that on Tuesday. And, and that's the beauty about living here is to see that happen. It's the start of it. It's how I like to see it. So hopefully come November third, you know, people put the party politics aside and they see these videos that we're putting out, the content that we're putting out and understand that I am the best candidate to help move District Five and the rest of Pasco County forward the way it needs to.
All right, well, thank you so much once again for joining. You guys definitely continue to tune in. Um, we're going to have, uh, even more candidates, even more positions as we lead up to the November elections. And everybody that's hollering, "You want change?", this is the way we can do it. This is the way we can do it. We can definitely go vote. I was feeling very empowered, not unfortunately, not by Pasco County election results because I didn't even see a lot of Democrats. I've seen a lot of people that didn't even have opponents. So I was not really inspired. I'm thankful for Victor saying that about the one lady that won, that's inspiring. But if you check out other counties in Florida, one county in particular, Duval, which is my hometown, Duval, come on, represent. Um, there were a lot of Democrats and I, 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 I don't even like to hop on Democrat versus Republican, but there were a lot of African-American women. There was just a diverse group.
Yes, yes.
People that won those seats. And I was so excited about it. A lot of capable, well-able people that are intelligent. Like you say, Victor, grew up in that community and they want to see change in it. And that can happen in Pasco County. A lot of people get discouraged because they feel like Florida is just a a Republican state or it's a state that nothing can happen, no type of change. But that's not true. We are the change. We just gotta get out there and do it. So thank you, Victor, for that testimony.
Yeah.
Because that was inspiring.
Not only do we have to get out there, not only do we have to get out there, but we gotta constantly keep reeducating people. You know, because uh reeducation is a big part of it, because a lot of people are miseducated. They don't understand. They don't know what a county commissioner is, what they do, what the, you know, what they oversee.
Right.
Um, but we we as a people have to hold our elected officials accountable. And I personally wanna see more people of color in positions of power in Pasco County, because that is the only way that as an African American person, as a person of color, we will ever see any change for us. You know, because you can't expect, you know, and I and and this is just being honest. You can't expect five white folks to under, five rich white folks to understand what it's like to be poor and black. You know, especially when none of them ever come to the west side. I think I only see some of those county commissioners on Martin Luther King Day at the African American Club. Other than that, you never see them. And that has to stop. We need to, I want my city, I want my county to look like when you go to Tampa, when you go see the city council, you see you see African Americans. I want I wanna see that in the Pasco County government. How 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 in a population of five hundred thousand almost in all these years and all these different ethnicities? Um, Latinos and Latinos being a large part of the population here as well.
Yeah.
Why are why are we not in those positions of power? What is what is going on? So that's what the Young Revolutionaries aim to do. We wanna inspire the youth, the kids of today, that you could be the next Attorney General of Florida. You could be the next governor of Florida. You could be the next Pasco County Commissioner. You could be the next superintendent. You could be the next school board. You could be the next teacher that inspires the next president or madam president. So, you know, that is the change that we are not go going to see. That is the change that's going to happen.
Yes, because then we won't have to sit and sit across from nobody and tell them how you.
And and you know what? I wanted to just make this last mention. We are tired of sitting at the table. It's time that we're going to create our own.
Yep. Amen to that. All right, thank you, gentlemen, for joining.
Yes, thank you for having me.
Yes, thank you, Pasco Young Revolutionaries. Thank you, Victor Rodriguez, running for Pasco County Commissioner. You guys go out and vote November third, right?
That's right, November third.
Okay, yes, I'm learning. I'm learning.
Candace, you could vote early. You you can go on to uh pasco votes dot com. You can register to vote there if you ain't, uh, if you have not registered yet. Uh, you can register to vote by mail there. Um, and you know, a lot of people are getting confused before we end here. Just because you're voting by mail does not mean your ballot has to go in the mail. You get that ballot, you vote at home in the comfort of your home. And when it comes time to early vote, there is a makeshift, um, it looks like a UPS box, USPS drop off box that's on wheels, that you could drop your ballot and the supervisor of election goes and picks it up from that early voting site and takes it back to the county building. So it never touches the USPS USPS services. So don't get discouraged to vote by mail, people. It is safe. It is safe. It it there is no doubt about it, it is a hundred percent safe. If you do exactly what I just told you, your vote will be counted and it will be a hundred percent safe.
Okay, that's good to know. That's good information, because I was discouraged myself. So I know it's probably a lot of people that are discouraged. So what you said, basically, fill it out. When it's early voting time, you could take your vote there and drop it off.
Absolutely, yeah. And the only person that touches it is actually supervisor of election personnel. And then it is transported by the supervisor himself, Brian Corley, back to the office.
Okay.
It doesn't get no simpler than that, people.
All right, well, that's good to know. We have definitely ran over our time.
It's awesome. It was good. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you again. No problem. All right, you guys, until next time. Peace.
Bye bye.